You ready? Good afternoon. This is the planning board. Public hearing. Site plan review. For Paul Beaton, 102 Lloyd Watson Road, Matthew Nine Lot Seven. He's added new deck to an existing deck. From our site walk on Saturday. We reviewed the site. They was three of the planning board members there. Thelma, Savin, and myself. We walked the area along with the CEO. And reviewed the area overall and then the CEO. No, we didn't find too much of any concern. Since this is the public hearing, we're willing to hear from anyone at this time that wishes to speak. We need you to step forward please up to the mic. Give your name and your address. So we'll know who's speaking and where you lay it back.
Sit down please.
Anyone that wishes to speak for the 102 Lloyd Watson Road. Anyone? Well, it doesn't look like anyone here wishes to speak. If there's a board member would like to bring something about Lloyd Watson's Road. If any board member wishes to speak to your in the public hearing about the application for Lloyd Watson, please do so.
I just had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Said that the site plan application was incomplete.
Yes, we have some information that we've asked him for. So we're not going to make a decision tonight. Okay? We had discovery also when we walked the site Saturday. We had all the discovery. We've asked him for some additional information so you know. That the drawing they gave us really doesn't define exactly how much of the deck they want to add. Where it's going to end, where it's going to end up here. And what's the old, the square footage will change slightly because he wants to change it just a little bit. You still want to do that, I guess?
Yes, yeah, I'd like to do that.
Okay. So we're waiting on him to submit the package along with those revised drawings. So we will wait till the next time to make our decision.
Advance about this one.
Okay. But I want to give you all the detailed information from what we picked up on Saturday.
Thank you.
Anything else that any board member would like to bring up at this time about this application only? Because this is the public hearing for this application. Well, that's off the short. Okay. One thing we already ran up though, I think. The package, Paul Beaton's package. The things that we asked him for. I'm going to bring that up. The things that so you'll know what. There's a letter in here. Notice of incomplete application to Mr. Beaton. There's four things also, you stick it together or not?
Yes.
Okay. The name of registration, known as sealed, a land surveyor, architect, engineer, or similar professional who prepared any plan. He doesn't have that, he's doing his own planning. And that way we will not ever get a professional nothing like that. He's right, he's drawing up himself, which is just fine. Location intersecting roads and driveways within 200 feet of site. That we wanted to know also. Locations of Lady Hobart drainage courses, wetland stands of trees, and other important natural features. With description of features to be retained and of any new landscaping. I don't think you don't have anything planned to take out or put in. But you need to answer that question for us.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, and location dimensions of any existing easements. And 10 copies of existing covenants or deed restrictions. If there's any, we need 10 copies of that.
Right, there's none of that.
So we'll leave all that along with the drawings you're doing, what you're going to do for it, revised drawing. Just next time before our next meeting. And you need it by when, Desiree?
That's up to the board.
Normally we receive that, what, 15 days prior, isn't it?
Yep, so.
We want it in time so when the board gets it and we can all look at it.
Sorry. So the agenda was closing August 30th.
August the 30th?
Yep.
So we need it within a week and a half?
Yep, if I have it by August 30th, it would go with the package.
Okay. So we need it by August the 30th.
Okay, so on like items three and four where it says if there's none, do I state that on the drawing? Okay.
No, or just don't attach a piece of paper.
Oh, okay.
Just a normal piece of paper and answer that question with a piece of paper. And attach it to your drawing.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Any other questions on this public hearing at this time, board? None? Okay. Well, since we have no one speaking at all, we give it five minutes. We will, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at this time for 102 Lloyd Watson Road. Do you have a second for that motion? Saving seconds. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your hand. Unites. Okay. So that was quick and easy.
That was nice. Does that mean we can go eat now?
If you want to, it's up to you. Okay. Now, then I'd like to call the order at this time. At 6:06 PM on August the 18th. A planning board meeting. This is our normal meeting at this time. And we have a full agenda we're going to be going through. Okay? If anybody's got any questions over the other desk. As we go through this, please. You can address them at appropriate time. Because at the end of this schedule, if you looked at it on our agenda. We have item number seven, which is open to public questions. Anybody got any questions, anything you want to bring up? Please do so at that time unless it's to a permanent application that you're. Want to talk or discuss. You can discuss with that application as we get to that topic. Board members got anything else to add to that presently? Okay. We got through the public hearing, now we need to go to correspondence. Does this include all of the minutes too?
Yes.
Desiree?
No, minutes are under their own.
They're under their own. Let's say correspondence that I have then are probably back here in the back.
The other member for review of minutes.
Review of minutes, planning board. I have some other ones. There's a notice of incomplete application to Mr. Beaton. That's correspondence in it, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's a. Number one is changed a little bit. We need to modify that question one. Because from our site walk under discovery, we've changed that to have him do the drawing. And revise the dimensions on the deck he's going to add to his building. So number one needs to be modified to address that. All the rest of them are okay. So that's a notice of incomplete application. There's another one from this. Helena Voucher, aren't she here tonight? Okay. Notice to others, where's that other one? The letters you sent, oh. Your other correspondence that you sent out, Desiree?
Yes.
The one to Roger Moreau?
Yep, I sent the letter of decision to Roger Moreau.
You see what you topic, you see the topics you put on it?
Uh-oh, what I put on it?
You put on it, propose to expand existing cabin. Could you change that to what it's for?
Yeah, okay.
So we need to modify that correspondence to change the title on the letter that went out to him. The other one is Ben and Donna Massett. Theirs is okay. That's a notice of decision and finding the facts for proposed expanding existing cabin. That's been done. Does anybody see any problems with that one? Are we okay with that correspondence? Okay? So that's all the correspondence that I have at this time. She has one.
I got one more for you. Jared Clifford has completed the missed meeting affidavit and he is all set to participate in anything to do with the Beetons moving forward.
The who moving forward?
The Beetons.
The Beetons, okay, good.
He's all up to date.
He's all up to, and we're not going to do nothing tonight because we're going to wait till the next meeting when we get to that one. That's good, and ladies up in there, that's super. Okay. Now, in review of minutes. Item number four. June the 16th workshop and July the 21st of 2021. Has anybody been through the minutes and found anything that we need to change? I went through it, I didn't find anything of any problem that I saw. I didn't find anything that needed to be changed on June the 16th. Anybody find anything on June the 16th that board members that we need to modify or change? Notice that one. June 16th is okay then. I guess we'll accept those as written?
Motion.
Motion to accept them as written, please, for June the 16th. Any second? I guess Clifford, make a motion, saving second. All in favor by showing your, raise your hands please. Forward. Now then, on July the 21st. Town of Al, this is our 21st meeting. The documents for that night. We got, has everybody looked through these? Have you taken a few minutes to look through them please? We're not in that big of a hurry because we're moving along really good. I want everybody to take a few minutes and see if there's any problems on July the 21st. Board meeting minutes. If anything you want to change, modify. Forward. I knew it, nothing, I went through it again. Anybody see any problems? Anything we want to change?
Motion to accept them as written.
Hmm?
Motion to accept them as written.
So same as much the motion that we accept them as written, do I have a second? Thelma seconds it. All in favor, please show your right hand, show hands please. Alright, forward. Okay. Old business. Wow, this is good. Site plan review, Paul Beaton, 102 Lloyd Watson Road, Matthew Nine Lot Seven. Add new decking to existing deck. We just had a public hearing just a few minutes ago. Now then, their application as it stands is not complete at this time. He's got a letter, he's got to submit additional information to us. So.
Which one is not complete?
Huh? No, it's not complete. Because we've asked, from discovery.
Yes.
From Saturday, from our discovery, we've asked for some new additional information.
Yes, we did.
We did ask for that. So do I have a motion to table this to our next meeting? Waiting on the, something that that affect, anybody want to make a motion? I don't need to motion. We're waiting for until our next meeting. Do we have a second? Clifford, seconds? All in favor of showing your right hand? Four? Good. So Mr. Beaton, you're on the table to the next meeting. We're waiting on your information.
Okay.
Okay? There's a. Desiree put in our package shows where the notice was sent out about the planning board meeting, site walk, and public hearing. It was posted like it should have been. And Mr. Beaton also, there's, he has a copy of the letter that was sent to him about the incomplete package. And we're going to, you're going to send a modification on item number one.
Yep, I'll email that to you tomorrow for a little bit.
Okay. Any further action by the board on item number eight? Site plan review for Paul Beaton, 102 Lloyd Watson Road. Are we through with that one from now?
Yes.
Okay. Now we get down to new business. Site plan review for Helena Voucher, 100 Wicks Road, Mount R13 Lot 39. Turn basement into duplex by two bedroom.
Who is that?
Okay. And it shows we have here. Notice the receipt of application. That you paid for the application and the escrow payment, you paid that. Property owners, notice to others, the letters has been sent out. All the others are listed here. Everybody's got any questions that what Desiree sent out? Now then, if you go over your package. The application from Miss Voucher?
Boucher.
Huh?
Boucher.
Boucher, French, huh? Miss Boucher. That's where she wants to change her basement into a two-bedroom duplex. I, anybody have any thoughts about it? Take your time, we've got plenty of time to look through this. I've looked through it already. It seems to be somewhat complete. I have a couple of questions, I'll let everybody else just take your time to look through it. Make sure we're not missing anything at all. We got all kinds of time. Looks like you've only owned this property for a year, is that correct?
Yes.
I have another copy if you need it.
I think I missed one of that.
You have, you should have a copy. Because I brought your package over here to do your package, remember? Yes, it's in there someplace. And it looks like there's been some roads out there that's been abandoned.
Yes.
Read that before you take it and showing that. Because she didn't have it. Yep. Desiree, you have a copy for her?
I have my copy.
Well, okay. She can.
As long as I get it back.
As long as you get it back, yes.
One thing I'd like to point out.
Okay, Mister.
Is that clearly says not drawn to scale. On the sketch plan that they drew out. So it's not drawn to scale, so it's a little bit too big and walking line. And then they have a little sketch plan here and it just shows a little drainage area. It's really not, it's not showing the existing vegetation.
Okay.
And there's any wetlands or anything as applicable in the windows. I would like the sketch plan to be a little bit more.
A little bit.
A little bit.
It's all high ground, there's no wetland.
Well, we need a.
Just a description.
We just need a description, a little more detail saying there's no wetlands at all. There's something to tell us when we're looking at your sketch that we're not in avoiding the ordinance that we're trying to work in under. Because we want to make sure that we're following the ordinance enough detail that we don't have any repercussions later. And the other idea is, we want to do a site walk, we're not going to approve this tonight. We're going to do a site walk and we're going to come and look at the property.
That's fine.
Yep. So all that, so that means you won't be approved the next month. We need some additional information, we need you to get that to us before August the 30th, did you say, Desiree? Before August the 30th, if any information we're going to ask for is additional. We want to make sure we get it as part of the total package. Yes.
Yeah, for Miss Boucher. Can you scrub out the basement a little bit on the door side of this new block?
Um. It's a walkout.
It's a walkout, so there's a daylight part of the basement? Okay.
And it's in the back of the home, so the upstairs, the first floor of the house is a walk-in from the front of the lot. And then the proposed rental downstairs will be a walk-in from the back.
So is there just one indoor/outdoor area? Are there windows that can be used in case in terms of needing fire?
Yeah, the plan is to put all the bedrooms, the reason it's only a two-bedroom where the upstairs is a three-bedroom. Is because there's only egress windows on that daylight side. So therefore we can't put bedrooms in the back because of code.
Okay, yeah.
So the kitchen and the bathroom will be in the back where there's.
Okay.
Will, Thelma, do anything else?
Um, right now other than the sketch plan being a little bit more detailed.
Yeah, we would like having your detail, a little more detail. And put some dimensions on it for us too. No, dimensions means a lot to us.
You should have all the dimensions.
She got footage from the back door to the property line and that's pretty much the yard.
Sure you asked it for you.
I titled it 2J.
Interesting thing is, is can the septic handle yet?
What's that?
Is the existing septic able to handle?
Yeah, that was what I was going to bring up. You're going to have to tell us, existing septic system will handle those additional bedrooms. Someone, so you want to get someone come in and look at that and put that on paper for you.
Okay, yeah.
We need that in writing.
Yeah, we talked about that.
We need that in writing, otherwise there's no way we can approve this because we're going against the ordinance in.
So you want that on paper? That a soil scientist who works at the town would have to make that decision.
For the town or for the state?
For the state or the town, whoever.
Those are certified.
It has to be a soil scientist to certify.
I'm already spoken to the guy.
What size tank you have and what size weed field and they.
Right. And they can do that for you. We need to know that.
So who's going to tell you that there's no wetland instead of me just telling you that? Should that soil scientist draw you up a plan?
He could, but at the same time. If you're saying it's all high, high, the land is all of height. It's in residential, it's not in a shoreline, at least it's not in shoreline, which is a big problem. If you're in shoreline, you're in residential. But you're not, you're in residential.
It's five hundred acres.
Right.
Yeah. You're saying it's five.
But you said that you're worried about wetland and.
Yes.
What do you want me to do to say that there's none on that beach?
It doesn't show any, you need to go and look at some town maps. You can come in here and I think that if there's been a drainage going through at one in one time, it is shown on their maps.
I believe in the old topographical maps.
The topo map is short too.
The topo maps that show like, you know, any, but you only have to worry within so many feet of the project area. Well, way outside.
Another question, we already have an occupancy for upstairs. So obviously we're away from any wetland and we couldn't have got the occupancy for the upstairs. That's right above what we want to do downstairs.
Yeah, we're not modifying the exterior structure.
I understand that, I knew you're not modifying the exterior.
So we wouldn't have an occupancy upstairs if we were too close to a.
Do you have an actual permit before you report the bill?
Yes.
Copy of that?
Yes.
Give us a copy of that, please. Not tonight, when you turn your package in.
Okay.
Just to make us a copy of it.
It says current flow is 584 feet by feet.
I see that, I see that.
We're just trying to do the basement legally.
Right.
As a separate rental. So as far as the wetlands and stuff, we wouldn't have got the occupancy upstairs, not to repeat myself.
That's understandable, we got to make sure we're staying within the confines of our ordinance.
Yeah, I will find it, it's in my package.
You got it, that's, that would give us a lot of answers. But we also, again, the big thing is what Mr. Prott brought up. We got to have someone go out there and certify the size of your septic system.
Yes.
And again, not people, but bedrooms that accommodate us.
Yeah, we already consulted with one because we figured that would come up.
Yes.
Just because there was 100 people living there before, doesn't mean anything.
It doesn't. I understand.
That's what you want is the septic design for the.
Well, whoever the guy, whoever your certified source person is, if you septic system people you bring in. They'll certify the size of the tank, how far the weed field goes out, and tell us how many bedrooms it accommodate. If you got two or three bedrooms upstairs and it only accommodates four, that only means you can only add one.
But you can, but you can make it feel bigger or you can.
Yeah.
The tank.
Rather less, what this guy told me, we probably have to extend it 10 feet to take the volume.
That's understandable.
So we'll get that drawn up for you.
Yeah, we need that from that certified, that certified.
No problem.
Not any, not everybody can do this.
So what else are we going to need?
Uh, that's, that's the big thing in the dimensions that you were asking for Clifford. On the detailed drawings.
Basically just a more uniform sketch plan. Um, that shows dimensions and shows the like, the topography of the area a little bit.
The outside of the.
You don't have to go crazy. We're not dealing with the.
Because I think that home structure he has is within like a foot.
Well, we look at the topo a little bit too. If you go into the town office and look at their topo map, you can make a copy of that and probably work off of that.
Okay, because she edited from the house. On a property line and a property line.
We just want to make sure that we don't have any problems when we make a decision where we're there.
Okay.
Right?
Even if you pencil paper like.
Yeah.
Show a few trees here.
I did that.
Yeah, she did that.
Yeah.
The last page has.
Yeah, she did.
That's perfect.
Because that's what it is in there.
That's exactly what the ordinance calls for is to show like.
No, that's one of the long points.
Just to show terrain.
Right, terrain, yes. Board, any other questions on this one, if, yes, Desiree?
Just want to suggest going through the site plan review and making sure that everything else is acceptable to the board so that we don't come back.
Has everybody gone through the site plan? Everything is shoe submitted? All this is in writing? It's free-handed except for some drawings. I, when I went through it, I didn't see anything that were missing. Other than what Mr. Prott brought up about the septic. And a little more detailed drawing on the site that Clifford brought up. Otherwise, it looks pretty complete.
Do you mind? Excuse me, do you mind if we bring this up to make sure you have this? Because I don't know if he has it, it's pretty detailed.
What is it?
It's the footage from the house and the property lines.
That's, yeah, we have that, but we're asking a little something different.
You got two different.
We're asking for a topo. Topo would show difference in elevation a little bit. Or you might have some, some, some trees or some, some other type of vegetation.
Um, I can tell you right now it's going to be different than what it was.
Okay.
But there's, well, actually when we bought it, there's only three trees on the whole property.
Okay, that's good, just, all you got to do is put it on there then.
Um, but your topographical map that you have in the office is going to be.
Right here in the town office, go in and ask.
Right, but it's not going to be accurate to what it is because we filled in some of the land so that we could have the driveway be level. So that the runoff would be minimal. So we added soil to the law.
Did you have authorization to do that from the CEO to fill that in?
Jesse knew that we did.
Okay, as long as Jesse knows.
He said that we were all set and we sent him pictures of stabilizing and everything and he's awesome with it.
Yeah, as long as Jesse's okay with it, then we, the board, we accept his opinions.
Another thing, why Jesse said that if we just deed it over another acre, then this would go through. But we don't want to deed over the other acre, that's why we're asking for variance.
Okay. I don't see a problem with the, what is it? It's three acres already. And what's, what size of the house? Did you might get the dimensions of the house, see how many square feet it is?
No, I didn't see that.
I didn't see that. How many square feet is your house now?
Forty-eight.
Huh?
Twenty by forty-eight?
That's what I mean by it.
Yeah.
Yes, I would.
1324, that's well within the limits there. 1,324 square.
Jesse told us that the problem was, was the acres, so that's why we're here for variance.
Well, I have to look at the item. He's got something he's thinking about that were, because probably you're going to add two more bedrooms. That's the maybe the issue. Way it stands now presently, it's probably not the acreage. Yes, ma'am.
I, I just want to ask a question because he's saying variance and variance goes before the board of appeals.
Yes.
This is the site plan review.
Yes, the site plan review, we don't make variances.
Well, they told us to come here.
Huh?
The town told us to come here and we were scheduled to.
Right, we don't make variances as far as that goes. We follow the guidelines, let it go.
The zoning board of appeals handles the variance.
They have a separate meeting for that.
Yeah.
Because that's what we're asking for, because he said. If we had four acres, he could give us a permit. He asked the town lawyer. But we only have three.
I see that.
So that's, we're here for variance.
Well, we don't give variances.
There's a misunderstanding here.
Yes, there is. You're going to have to go. Zoning board of appeals for that.
Well, also besides the variance, you really want to look into the septic thing.
Yes. Yes, I would look, before you go in.
You said that the septic isn't really.
Right.
Big enough, so.
Before you didn't go in, you better, you know, get your answers from.
I'll say that, I wanted to do it last week, but we've been so busy, I. I, you're aware, and I know that you probably want that, but I haven't had time to do it.
So, if, if it's true that you need a variance, you need to go back and talk to Jesse again.
Yes.
That was, the whole point was coming here.
Well, what I think, well, if we need to make a motion as a planning board.
Somebody.
Refer this back to the CEO. Refer it back to the CEO to make a decision on which way it needs to go. But we still need to make a decision, a, a motion on it. Can I get a motion from someone on the board to send this back to the CEO to give guidance to the applicant on which way they need to go? I'll make that motion. Need, no, I'll second, I'll second. Okay, that's what we're going to do, we're going to send it back to the CEO. Huh? Oh, just, you're, you're getting hit up, all in favor, show the right hand, please, three, all opposed, one. So, it's going back to the CEO at this time. We're not, we don't make variances.
Well, not to keep you going, but somebody in the town sent us in this direction.
I understand, but, but I'm glad you said.
I apologize for using up your time.
That's okay.
I'm glad you came in, it wasn't your fault.
It's not your fault, he's right.
It, it should have been handled better.
Yes.
And nothing to do with what you did.
There's nothing to do.
You need to talk to Jesse, the, the CEO, you need to talk to him and confirm if you need a variance or if you just need to go through a site plan review. If you need a variance, you got to go through the Board of Appeals and we need to schedule with them and get that set up. If it is a site plan review, we'll put you back on the agenda for next month.
Okay.
He told us, just what I told you, he said if, if there's four acres, I can give you a permit.
Right.
But it's only three, so you have to ask for a variance.
That's not something we, we.
It's a, we're here.
Okay. I, there is a way to work around that by, uh, by one of the tables that we got in the book, but let's go back to Jesse first.
Okay.
And see what Jesse advises you, and he'll let us know through our secretary.
Yeah, you guys go ahead and contact him, I'll be in the office sometime on Monday, I'll try to get ahold of him as well, try to, you know, get him for both sides and get a, get an answer for you guys as soon as we can.
Great, yeah, he should be in tomorrow, so.
Yeah, yeah, tomorrow, and I think he usually has hours on Saturday too, so.
Well, Jesse's been built, so I'm not sure what his schedule is right now.
Yeah, Jesse.
I'll text him and he usually responds pretty good to texts.
Jesse's on a very light work schedule, we'll just tell you that. He has to be on this schedule and he cannot be in situations that causes him to have a problem.
Okay.
So, best thing to do is text him and just wait till he answers you.
Yeah, that's usually what I do.
Thank you for coming in, though, we appreciate that.
Thank you for talking to us.
Hopefully we go to the next place.
You may be back in here, you may see me back.
I hope so.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we've, uh, tabled the, we've tabled the, uh, about, uh, Boucher, uh, application for the, uh, basement in two duplex, two bedrooms because of some unanswered questions. Okay, now then, we're down to item number seven. Does any board member have anything else to bring up before we open this up? I will be. Open to public questions, we're open at this time from anyone on the floor that wishes to address the board with a question, we need you to give your name, your address, and then, uh, bring forward the question that you have for the planning board. Go ahead. Any questions for the planning board? Yes, ma'am. Okay, that's a nice item on our agenda for tonight.
No, you got one more.
Uh, schedule the work, huh?
You got one more?
I know, I got a couple more. Schedule a workshop for Wednesday, September the first, do we need to schedule a workshop, board?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. We're going to have a September first workshop and some topics you'd like to bring up, a topic on for the workshop?
Um, just discussing how things are going on the board and, and basically in town in general, what we're supposed to be doing based on the bylaws and with the comprehensive plan, we're supposed to generally engage in discussions on how we feel things are progressing and what, what things we need, uh, felt we need to deal with and what things that we don't need to deal with.
Okay. September the first?
So, I, I just have a question and I need a motion, so after the September eleventh election.
I'm going to.
We're going to have new members.
Yes.
I, I'm totally on board with the workshop, but with having new members come aboard, do you want to wait and discuss it with the new members? Or do you want to get it, you know, get the ball?
No, let's just, just get the ball.
Okay.
Does that always bring the new members up?
Okay, just want to make sure.
So, we have a September first, uh, workshop.
Motion.
Uh, at what time, six? At six o'clock, I need a motion for that. Motion by Clifford, second by Savin, all in favor, show of hands, your right hand? Unanimous? Okay, and you'll schedule the next meeting then, after that. Now, a couple of things I want to bring up before the board. Uh, Desiree, she beat me to one of them, thank you. As of Sep, we have an election coming up in September. September the tenth is election day. I think the, the polls will be open here from two to six P M. I think it's, I think I'm right on that. Anybody in the, everybody votes and come out and vote for your candidate of choice and, uh, that fall year may change the board for our next meeting. So, keep in mind, board, all the board, that at our next meeting in September, we need to reorganize, have, be ready to, uh, motion in, or make a motion for a new president, our chairman of the board, vice chairman, those are the two positions we need to be thinking about. Is there anything else that we have to change? I think that's it, just those two positions. Or.
Unless you want to get rid of me?
No, we will keep you.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, that's kind of about the vote coming up and all that, and what may change the board's makeup? Anybody got anything else on the board you'd like to bring up at this time?
I would like to go into executive session and discuss the decisions, uh, at, at the meeting as well.
Well, they all can go in executive session for a certain way, for certain, what other topics over there, Desiree, what you've got?
Got it, I want to make sure I have this with me.
Personnel matters. Personnel matters? What are they, personnel matters, can he want them?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, he's got a motion, I don't know if he's been seconded or not, wait.
Before you do that, can we sign his plan from the last meeting?
Yes, we'll, we'll do that before we back signal into executive session.
Okay.
We can still make the motion and, and do that.
Yeah.
Do I have a second for Clifford's motion?
So, just to be clear, so he can do the motion, the right.
Right way to say it.
The specific, so executive session pursuant to one M R S A four oh five six A.
Do I have a second for that? I don't know if you can second that or not, it's an alternate. Board member, uh, okay, I don't care if you second it, if they, if they allow that. All in favor, show of hands, please, your right hand? Two, three, uh, three, uh, yes, and two no's.